What are you doing that, Keith? Just throw it up there.
No. Well, good afternoon. It is 4:02 PM. I'd like to call the College Place City Council Workshop to order. Ms. Nyhagen, would you please say our prayer and our pledge?
Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come to do the business of the city. We ask that you will give us the wisdom we need to make the choices that are right for our community and our staff. Bless our mayor and our staff, Lord, and we ask that you would bless those men and women that are serving our country so well. Please bless them and keep them in your care. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum present with Mr. Bobbitt, Mr. Dickerson, Ms. Nyhagen, and Ms. Sherman. Who's the fellow? Do we have any administrative reports?
The three items on the straight front.
Okay. So, other than the three items, is there any item that the council would like to add? Seeing none, we'll start off with Ms. Kilgore and review of bond issuer RFPs.
So, we went out for RFP and ended up with four responses. And there was one in particular that stuck out above the rest that I would like to recommend to you guys that we take forward at council meeting, and that was Community Bank. They offered us $2 million bond at, I think it -- did I put the terms in here? I don't remember the interest rate, but 2.59. Does that sound right? With a drawdown clause so that we don't have to take it all at the beginning. We can take it as we need it. And a 20-year amortization period so that we have -- they've projected the debt service payment to be about $130,000 a year. We have budgeted closer to $140,000, so that falls well within our budget. And they've just been really easy to work with in the past, so that is what I wanted to give you guys information-wise. We also had responses from DA Davidson, Banner Bank, and Washington Federal. And DA Davidson didn't really give me firm numbers because they would be doing a public offering, but the comparables that they gave me, the interest rates weren't as good as what the banks were offering us. Washington Federal and Banner, thank you, both offered us scenarios where the rate would reset at 10 years, which I wasn't comfortable with. Banner also offered us a 20-year fixed rate, but it was higher than Community Bank's interest rate, and there was a fairly sizable origination fee involved with it. So, overall, I would like to recommend Community Bank and see if you are supportive of me bringing that forward to the next council meeting.
When you -- or when they submit these RFPs, are you working with the local branches on these, and so ongoing you'd be working with the team here?
Yeah. So, the Community Bank in College Place is who I would be working with.
That's convenient.
Other questions for Ms. Kilgore?
I think it sounds great.
Seeing none, let's move on to the next item, which is ambulance service.
Chief Winter. I'm not sure where I'm supposed to be. Where's this from? I can stand. I can sit back over here. I just shower once today.
Oh, yes.
Wonderful. I've got new lenses today. It's not working well. We have been approached by the city of Walla Walla regarding ambulance service, and they are at a point where they are not collecting as much revenue as they are billing, and according to them, it is causing a budget shortfall in their ambulance service. I gave out a study that is really -- is something that they were required to do by law so that they could apply for a new funding source from the federal government. And in doing that process of coming up with that report, it shows in there how much each entity that they go and respond to, they are not -- how much they are not collecting from each of those entities. Since that report, they've had two meetings with us and have asked at those two meetings for us to think about budgeting for next year money to help offset what they are losing by providing service to our residents. And that number is about $68,000 to provide ALS service outside of their own city to come to College Place and provide that service. Since that time, we have made contact with American Medical Response, AMR, which is a private ambulance service, to see how much it would cost for them to provide ALS service within our community. We have also looked at what it would cost if we provided basic life support or BLS in our own community and then contracted for just the ALS portion for the city of Walla Walla to provide that for us. So, in that process, I created a chart or a spreadsheet there that is more of a talking point than I would say numbers I would commit myself to as far as hard numbers on the revenue side. And probably even some of the expense side, it is probably a representation, but not -- I wouldn't put fact on it because we've not run an ambulance service in College Place since 1989. It would be very hard to project hard numbers to that. And in my conversations with Mike and with Sarah, we're still uncomfortable of saying, you know, what that might come out to be. The hope, if we chose to do some or all of our own transports in College Place, that we could break even. I don't think anybody sees ambulance service as a moneymaker because of how Medicaid reimburses, how Medicare reimburses, how insurance reimburses. Those are varying scales, and they are -- they don't necessarily pay what you think they should pay, and they don't care how much it costs you to deliver the service necessarily. They just -- this is what they're going to pay. So, that makes it a little hard to say this is a hard number in the future. So, that is what I have presented for you so that we could talk about it and get ideas and what direction you would like to go. They are hoping we could come to some sort of an agreement or terms so that they could base their next budget on it, and we could base our next budget on it. There's also a letter that they sent out stating that District Four had said, "No, they're not going to pay them any money," and that they hadn't heard from anybody else yet. So, that has -- I don't know if that letter made it into the packet. I believe it.
So, what does that mean if District Four isn't going to pay them any money?
Sure. So, there's a countywide EMS levy that 50 cents per thousand is paid upon your home property that goes for EMS services. And that is to help cover the expense of transport, which currently is a City of Walla Walla service that is provided pretty much throughout the county except for maybe Waitsburg and the Burbank area. They have their own system.
For advanced life support.
For advanced.
Could you explain the difference between BLS and ALS?
Sure. A cheeky answer would be ALS saves lives and BLS saves ALS. But the real thing would be, is basic life support is your EMTs. They go through 120-hour program. It's first aid. It's automatic defibrillator. We do some drugs. We assist people with some medications as well. The ALS is actually an 18-month program. It's really in-depth. It is a lot to become a paramedic, and they have a lot larger skill set. Our volunteers don't have that skill set because it's a huge time commitment and a huge money expense. City of Walla Walla, almost everybody on their department is at that ALS level. So, I guess we could compare it to a specialist versus the generalist type of thing. So, that is the difference. And there are communities that just do BLS. It's whatever the community is willing to pay for.
And that's Fire District Four?
Fire District Four is BLS. They do have two paramedics on their department. Their fire chief and then one of their firefighters happens to be a paramedic. Their license for transport and care is BLS. So, the only two ALS in our county is Fire District Five, which is Burbank, and the city of Walla Walla.
And Chief, can you explain how the ambulance service works here? What our staff does?
Sure. So, countywide, we do a tiered response, and we get a lot of questions on scene, and we try to explain this, that we always try to send whoever's closest there to stabilize. So, we send units from College Place to go there, stabilize the patient, get the patient ready for transport, take their vitals, make sure that, yes, they really want an ambulance and really need an ambulance. And then the ALS comes, sometimes a minute later, sometimes five, 10 minutes later, depending on where they're at and availability, to do those more advanced skills and then to transport them to the hospital. Today, I don't have a license that says I can transport anybody to the hospital. We have applied for that license. And the reason we've applied for that is to help lessen some of the burden when they're busy. We could take somebody. Today, I don't even have that option. So, that's why we have applied.
Like in a fire truck vehicle?
We have a rescue that looks just like an ambulance.
Hold on to the hose. That makes sense.
Yeah. So, there's a cot in the back. I mean, inside, you would think you're in an ambulance. Yes, sir.
So, in terms of equipment, are they the same as ALS?
No. So, ALS is more medications, more invasive procedures. So, they're going to start your IVs. They're going to put a tube down your throat. They're going to put lots of -- they carry like pain medication, so if you're really hurt, they can dope you up.
As far as a rescue truck, is there that equipment on board that would support someone that had paramedics or something?
No. I don't carry those drugs. I don't carry those types of airways or IVs. A, it's not in our skill set. B, it's expensive. And C, it expires. It doesn't mean I couldn't have like a bag. And how it works, a lot of times, if the ALS catches up with a BLS unit out in the field somewhere, they just grab their go-kit and jump into the other ambulance as a paramedic.
What would it take for you?
So, and for us, if we were to transport, there really is no other equipment that we would need to purchase that we wouldn't have anyways. We may need to buy a cot because we currently borrow one, but the rest of that is stuff that is required whether you're a transport or a non-transport type of vehicle.
Can you tell about how many have gone to St. Mary's and how many have gone to General? How the balance is? And now with General closing, what that's going to do? Because they'll all emergencies now go to the gym. I mean, all of St. Mary's now, right?
Yeah. I don't know how that affects this topic, but I'm happy to answer that.
Well, no. No, it's just pink in my mind. I just wanted to know because it's a situation.
There will be a short-time burden to St. Mary's because they are expecting more patients to be there in their ER based upon what General's ER has been doing. And so, there may be a delay in finding bed space. So, one of the concerns from the ambulance delivery side is we don't want to be that bed space while you find somebody.
That was going to be the question.
We don't want to be sitting here for an hour on our cot. We need to get back to service.
That's what I was thinking about. Okay, thank you.
But I don't have a hard number of where that split was.
It's going to change a lot.
Sure.
So, there really isn't going to be any change, or at least not significant change, in the equipment required in the current rescue vehicle?
Correct. It today could be a BLS transport vehicle.
And have you heard back from the trauma care council on your BLS license and the timeline for that?
Yes, they haven't.
That's nice of them to consider.
And that goes to where to get approved?
Department of Health has that. They have to come out and do a psych visit, and they try and group those so that they don't have to keep driving over because it's a burden to drive to the east side of the state for them. Their words, not mine. So, for Burbank, when they got their ALS licenses, what has freed up a BLS license for us to There's a state plan that says there's only so many licenses per region, and so we had to wait for that to happen. They applied a year ago for that license to go to ALS. We are hoping to take their existing license. It won't take so long because the ALS license was an addition to the plan. This is not. This is just a name change.
So, I want to make sure I understand this because what it's sounding like right now is that we're just talking about getting this license. There's not going to be an increase to equipment. We're not having to buy any ambulances. We're not having to get an additional five people on staff. I mean, what are -- what's the whole picture?
Sure. If we're just wanting to help our neighbors out and that's it, then we could do that today if we had the license. If we are wanting to establish a reliable service in order to either change the way we do business, to lower the amount of reliability on the ALS service because 60% of what the ALS service is coming through is actually a BLS call, and to help reduce their workload and all those things, we would probably need to purchase another used ambulance for when this one breaks or needs to get the oil changed, or we have two calls at the same time, any of those types of things. So, there would be expense there. We do the work today. We just don't drive for it. So, my proposal would be that as revenue came in, we would relook at how we pay the volunteers. Today, they're making about $2 a call, and now they're going to be doing -- they're taking an hour from their life, maybe their work, maybe their wife's birthday party, whatever, to go help somebody, which is wonderful and great, but I don't know if $2 is fair when District Four is paying 12 or not even close. And we haven't updated in a long time. And my guys aren't asking to do that, but I'm afraid if I'm asking for more service, it may be fair to do based upon if there is revenue. I'm not trying to grow my budget just to grow my budget. That is the intent.
So, what do we want to do today, just here?
Well, the issue today is to make sure that we answer any questions that you may have and find out if there's any other data that you would like to receive. You know, this is a budgeting process. We certainly need to get this in place by the fall to decide what we're going to do.
I think I'd like to see some of these things that you're talking about with an increase to the volunteers and/or ambulance, even though they're future things. I think I'd like to see kind of a bigger picture, even though it's not something that we're doing right now. What's it going to look like? And I mean, I know that you said that a lot of things are gray right now, and so I know that it would also be gray, but I think that would be more helpful than starting a process and getting a year into it and saying, "Whoa, this sucks, but we have to keep going because we've kind of committed to it." Is that -- it just sounded like you're going to make that up, and that's great. That's what I --
No, no.
No, that's gray. I want gray. Good. Gray is more black.
Mr. Bobbitt, a question?
I have a question. I'm just trying to understand whether the needs of our citizens in College Place, kind of what's the history of this service we provide here and kind of that, that's something we want to develop. Here's College Place, we're cooperating with the city of Walla Walla. Where's that balance?
My professional opinion, even though I don't like my opinion at the moment, is we probably need to be in the business somewhat of transport. We're 900 EMS calls right now. That's busy for a town or a community our size because --
900 over what? A year?
Over a year.
Okay.
Three a day we're going out on an EMS call. So, we -- last year hit about 1,300 calls. District Four, who has started to help alleviate some of this by doing transport, hit about 500 calls last year total. They're expecting about 285 transports this year. If we helped out, Walla Walla City's numbers is about 500 transports for us next year, which if we did, the way they are seeking funds from us, it would reduce the amount of money they're seeking from us because they're not coming here as often.
That's kind of where I'd like to see this work, statistics and class and looking for that balance, trying to make sure you look at power services here and a lot of the ID also cooperating and working there for finding that balance.
The statistics is really tough, at least from my standpoint. Maybe somebody else could do a better job of coming up with the financial statistic end of that. The fire department's goal is to provide a great service. It isn't to be the great expense or the great revenue. So, that isn't my expertise and focus, unfortunately. I don't have that depth over there to give you a very deep analysis of that. It would have to be put upon somebody else, I think, to get hard numbers, to be honest.
I'd love to see. I don't think we can work on someone. Any idea on the number of required ALS transport vices vice BLS vice ambulance call where you just go out and?
Yeah. So, City Walla believes that they transport 60 to 70% of the time, and about 60% of what they go on in College Place is a BLS call. And that is based upon how things are billed. So, if I do an ALS skill on the patient, then I can bill it as an ALS call versus could I have taken that same patient from point A to point B without doing an ALS skill? I probably could have. So, the nation's statistic of ALS is 18% of all true calls are ALS. But our demographics are different. I mean, all those things do come into play that were not the same as anybody else. You know, to be an elderly university town is an odd mix.
Would the county EMS and trauma care coordinator have pretty good statistics and data?
She would. She wouldn't have financial data.
Well, financial data is something totally different.
Something on the finance side, though, that just jogged into my memory, is with that EMS levy, it's based upon a formula of not -- we don't get the money necessarily that was collected here. We get it based upon call volume, based upon population, and assessed evaluation. So, today, right now, in 2017, we received about $70,000 on top of what was paid by our residents in EMS funds, which kind of coincides with that $68,000 expense. So, it truly -- if the formula was different, it wouldn't have been our money. It would have stayed with -- it wouldn't have been City Walla Walla's money either. It would have stayed with the fire districts where the money came from. The way the EMS levy program works is about $400,000 of revenue that's earned from the EMS levy goes to either College Place or City of Walla Walla, just because that's where the call volume is at. So, the districts wouldn't mind changing that formula. The City of Walla Walla and us would not like to change that formula because it's in our benefit currently. And that formula's been around 16 years or so since the EMS levy started, so.
Mr. Dickerson?
So, this is just an introduction here, apart from what I'm concerned. I'm worried about it. I'm going to sit down and kind of learn more if we can talk about it.
Happy to.
You know, time comes and so forth. And so, I'm not prepared to make my recommendation at this point, but I consider this being an introduction to a concept that we need to look into further and take it kind of slow.
You know, and if we want to take a slow approach, maybe we want to pay for the first year. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, that's -- I just want time for discussion and full view.
Yeah. I don't think the goal of this from anybody is to go blindly into it.
Yeah. And I don't know enough to even ask the right questions, so I don't give any more.
Okay. Happy to talk with you.
This will be, I think, several council meetings worth of discussion as this goes forward, but it's relatively complex and there's a lot of moving parts. We get into, if we run an ambulance service, we get into issues around billing. There's a -- I mean, there's a whole variety of things that in the long run we have to look at to deal with that. Most of that's going to be done by a third party, but it's time-intensive and requires some forethought, which is why we wanted to start, just start with, here's what we're talking about, and find out what questions you have.
And I trust you're familiar with the model of work from here to City of Walla and back here, what will be done?
Yeah. The reoccurring theme, and this is me being very candid, is every fire chief I've ever talked to about, hey, we're looking at starting up an ambulance service, their first response is, "Why? Why would you want to do that?"
What do you think?
Said, "I may not have a choice." And our model would be different because we're not paying staff, because, you know, we're not staff-heavy to, you know, to change that up, and, you know, there's not revenue to put staff on. And most of these other services are staff-heavy on staffing, and that's expensive.
Well, just to have the one full-time firefighter, firefighter, paramedic, or firefighter at the empty base, and seven people to have someone here 24 hours a day. at the empty base, and seven people, to have someone here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So there's, there's a whole variety of things as we go forward. We'll have to be discussing and discussing. Any further discussion?
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Chief Winter. He's done a good job and we appreciate all that he do and really do. Our, we have a situation here in College Place with our police department, our fire department. We should be so totally proud of, so totally proud. And I am. Thank you.
There's nothing more important than health and safety.
That's right.
So thank you. If there's no further discussion, we'll move on to the...
Thank you.
Finally, thank you, Chief. Welcome back. Where, where were you fired returning from?
I just came back from Winthrop. I went up Saturday. They had a 1,200 acre fire there in Carlton again, in the same place that it burned, burned up. One occupied, unoccupied structure in an outbuilding. We had about 400 firefighters there. And I came home and was timed to bed.
And how many times have you been deployed this year?
Uh, me personally, this was my fifth. And John Boos has been out twice. So it's been a very busy season when they told us it wasn't going to start until end of August. So it's a very busy season because the grass is about yeta everywhere.
Mr. Boos just came back from the fire by Palm Bay, so.
Theirs was a little larger than ours, but different field models. Yeah, we spent 1.4 million. I think they spent $2.5 million or so. Asked them if we could just do a state moab in College Place, just, just once and no one show up, we'll just take the money. They did think that was appropriate.
That was, that was amazing.
May I do two?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosatello, library service options.
Uh, thank you. So, yeah, council, me the one guy has given permission to talk to Wal-Wal City Council about the whole library service issue. This has been percolating for a number of years. There's some who in the community who wanted, others who don't. So just researching the various options and seeing what the various organizations would go for as far as their cross-model. So originally, in talking with the City of Wal-Wal, they basically wanted a stepped fee each year, which would go from $70,000 up to just shy of $150,000. However, we don't have the revenue for that. And we also don't really have evidence of how many people would utilize it. So I countered inquiring if there would be a way to do an agreement where if folks needed a card and they showed that they were College Place residents, that basically the family be issued a card and then we would get invoice for it. So just utilize them what basically is used. We went before the City of Wal-Wal City Council during their workshop. They were open to that for a two-year trial period. However, right around that time, I had, I was contacted by Rhonda Gould over at the Rural Library District. And they've had a little bit of changeover of staff, leadership, also their board. Whereas before, it was indicated that really the option they were looking at was the annexation model. I explained what the proposal was to City of Wal-Wal. And they came back to me and said they would basically go for the same thing. So I made a little comparison chart as far as the differences and similarities between the City Wal-Wal Library and then the Rural Library District. The key things are that with the City Wal-Wal Library costs $68, the Rural Library District is 40. Long-term, City of Wal...
This is for non-residents?
Yeah.
And that's, that's not a shared cost for the city? That's out of their own market?
Yeah, this is that, yeah. The card would be for the entire family of both. The initial term is the two years. But eventually, if we were to go with the, the City of Wal-Wal route, it would be the $70,000 stepping up to $148. With the Rural Library District, the model would be annexation into the set district. Right now, their value is 47 cents per thousand. Hours, City Library, they're open Monday through Friday and Saturday. Rural Library District, they're open all seven days a week, all the restricted times on, on Sunday, and a little shorter Monday through Friday. The City Library, their staffing is very professional. The Rural Library District, they have some professional, but it's also filled in with part-time folks as well. School programs, the City Library does have that. The Rural Library has some, but it's not consistent. Summer reading programs, they both have that. Library materials, the City Library has a little more than the Rural Library District. The Rural Library District is in Walnut, which is the library organization that the community colleges. And so there's opportunities to borrow there. Both have adult book programs. And then the other question that's in this matrix is would either one consider building a facility in College Place? And through the conversations with City of Wal-Wal, they have the one facility and they pretty much want to stay at the one facility. The Rural Library District, they do own that chunk of property down on College Avenue. And hypothetically, if there was an annexation down the line, the ultimate goal would be to put a branch over this way and then eventually relocate Plaza. The key things to consider is, is in the budget this year, there is no room for this. In fiscal year 2018, that could be part of a budgetary discussion if it's so deemed the city council wants to entertain this. But really, long-term for a library, there really has to be some sort of other revenue stream since it's another service. So with that, that's...
So just to be clear, and I've been through this before, maybe 16 or 17 years, maybe less. But just to be clear, so right now, College Place resident cannot buy a card from either the Rural or the City of Wal-Wal without an agreement?
Uh, that, that, no, they can buy a card, they can buy a card individually.
Yeah, it's only $68?
Yeah.
Versus 40?
Uh, yeah, 68 the city, 40 of rural.
And many people are doing that right now as soon?
Uh, yeah.
And, and our involvement would be to make it, to pay the tab and to make it?
To, the basically proposal was to pay a tab for it. And really, there have been indicators from both the City and Rural Library folks who can afford that. And that is an access issue. So it would help alleviate that. And then also, we could give other accounts as far as the actual need should this go to a vote or something.
So as I recall, years ago, we reimbursed our citizens for half? Is that what you...
All.
All?
If you recall.
It could have been both.
And I remember very well because we had quite a discussion about this a couple of times. We didn't have that many people that we paid at all. And those, and then when we did a study, those that were using it could afford to pay for those. We, we didn't do a study on their income and things like that and ask them why, you know. But when we kind of looked into it, some of the, some of our citizens were quite upset because we were paying for cards that people could afford. And then if I'm not mistaken, Larry, we, we had the use of the university or some other library that they could go to in town. And I'm not sure if the university still has the library or not. But I know that it was quite a sticky event because it was just, we didn't have a whole lot. But we paid the whole card, $40. It was $40.
Becoming part of the rural district, how would that be accomplished? By...
There had to be a vote in the people.
Yeah.
To, to incorporate, to incorporate the city within the Rural Library District with required assistance.
So I think that's a no-brainer. We've had as many as 150 people, maybe less, sign up for library cards. And we've got a population of 10,000. So that's a very small amount of people that are from off the service. But yeah, there's might use it for a lot of people. But 47 cents per thousand valuation would be how much on a $200,000 house? Basically, going from $90 a year?
It's, you know, the, the...
And times how many homeowners? 6,000, so homeowners maybe?
Oh, no. 2,500.
2,500?
Yeah, $94 add $200,000 house.
So has the city still, or has the library still not provided a number of how many cards they've issued for College Place residents?
Not an updated one yet. I...
There was one original?
Yeah. Uh, there, there was an older one, but not like...
So why haven't they not produced that? Isn't, are, like, do we need to put in a public records request or something? Because like, shouldn't that just...
I've, I've asked through email channels. I can put a records request and...
If you're allowed. Yeah, because I mean, this just kind of seems like a...
Freebie.
Well, it, it's very arbitrary. If we don't have, like, we're talking about $150,000 for potentially 20 people that are buying a card. That doesn't make a lot of sense. If 8,000 people are getting caught, like, hmm, okay. Do they have a timeline on when they're going to get that cost?
Well, I, I can, I can inquire again. So, and then, and final records request, but final to...
The numbers I'm getting, correct me if I'm wrong, is if we had 150 people to use the library services at $68, you know, that might be $10,000. Our citizens would pay. If we were levying, we'd be paying $235,000 and only a fraction.
Mike, do you want to share the results of the strategic planning survey and when they looked at the, the, basically, the basic people that really wanted library access were those people a little older and people with young families?
It, it was basically a U-shaped chart. There were either folks who were very much against it and very much more.
But that's a pretty, I mean, it's not a statistical sample. That's just me.
Sure, but...
Go forward with some additional data before we leave?
That would be nice.
So I, I see this the same way. I see some, we need more discussion. I need more feedback from constituents, city residents. I noticed that we advertised for the Saturday market or, 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 market, on popular Facebook pages, but we didn't advertise for this meeting on popular Facebook pages, other than our own.
This was on Facebook?
Yeah. Well, our own. We only have 400 followers and 18 viewers. You got some, some that are, where I see you at, right? I think I have 10,000 viewers. And so, and where I see you posting on, for, maybe we could do the same thing for our meetings, our workshops, so we have people in here.
Oh, I see it in the same place as the, I feel like he's doing the same thing for everything, but that's okay. Um, yeah, never mind.
Any other discussion? Seeing them, is there a motion to adjourn?
So...
Let's move on to Ms. Nyhagen. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Sherman, all in favor, please signify the same line. Pose same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
The next time you folks see me, I will be 80 years old. Yum, yum, yum.